All right, let's call it maybe the order. Please rise for the flex.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of board meeting minutes for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm ready for the approval of board meeting minutes for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
For the approval of meeting agenda?
We have one adjustment that we just like to recommend for people. We are just working through the executive session on night of twelve. We're just changing um uh fee for bargaining thirty minutes if no action be taken regarding the bargaining of the administrators contract.
Also.
What? We have one other adjustment.
We're having, oh sorry, we're having the uh meeting, but we're changing the reason for the executive session.
And then uh uh number five consent agenda, see approval vouchers. Seven and eight, um just approving our uh up-to-date payroll vouchers.
Oh yeah, those are same.
Both noted on the board agenda, but changed within twenty-four hours.
Can I get a motion? We need to have a motion for that.
Think you could take a motion to amend the motion?
Yes, please.
I'll move to amend the meeting agenda to add uh. Approval voucher C, um what's that, six and seven?
Seven and one?
Seven and eight, yeah, seven and eight. And also amend the executive session to only be for bargaining for thirty minutes of no action. Striking, uh A.
I'll second that. No motion made and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so then we'll go back to the approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Incentive agenda. And we'll see if we can some of them. Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh discussion items, we'll start out with uh web and web and link through update.
Yeah, I know we've talked a lot about web and link, so I will capture just the highlights. So today was our first ever web and link through web and the middle school link group at high school. We had our eighth graders working with our sixth graders first thing in the morning, helping them get acclimated to middle school. And then at high school juniors and seniors working with our freshmen. And um the kids have gone through a couple of days of training this summer to learn how to lead all the games with all the students. So we had upperclassmen independently leading a bunch of games, get to know you with students. And towards the end of the morning at the middle school, a couple of the web crew leaders came up to me and were like, you know, I think this was a really good idea. And I was like, well, why do you think it was a good idea, thinking they're gonna say, why not a whole morning now to class? No, they're like, well, it was fun for me and it was also fun, or it's also nice to know that teachers saw me as a leader.
Oh, that's nice.
And so um she never proceeded to say, I just really wish I had this when I was in sixth grade. And then we had paired actually another eighth grade student in with web crew, and this is student that had a lot of trouble last year with some bullying. And I said, let's just have you start the year in a real easy way. We're gonna put you in a web crew with some leaders. And here's the student, so quiet, she leans over to me and she's like, Ms. Holmes, I really think this is a nice idea. I really like this. And towards the end of the day, she's helping these sixth graders find their classes. And this is a student who was very disconnected, extraordinarily disconnected from school. And um you know, that's the impact that programs like this have. And so our web and link group leaders will have that same group of underclassmen all year, where they will be reaching out during the school year, they'll be pushing into their classes, hosting uh events like cram and cocoa for finals and just really getting the kids excited and feeling comfortable at school. It was really nice to see, I saw many tears this morning at the middle school and no parents worried about their student, but by the end of the day, smiles and laughter.
That's nice. I love that.
Awesome.
We did a walk today and all covered that in our superintendent's meeting, but Michael, we went to go see Web and Link. Do you have any thoughts?
I thought it was awesome. There were so many people having fun and smiles. And then I talked to, I didn't get to talk to anybody in the web, but I got to talk to you and the link. And they asked how their morning going was going, and it was like great. And I asked, I was able to actually reach out to one of our McClary students coming from McClary. And he's like, yeah, I'm actually learning names, I know people. And he was all smiles, which was kind of surprising. So yeah, it uh it was great to see.
This aligns with one of the board goals this year, making sure that we have all of our eagles are finding a place within our district. Just one of our priorities now that we want to have all of our students integrated. So I know Tasha and her team have been working hard on ensuring both the middle school has a way to have all of our sixth graders feel that they're kind of acclimated. They understand the expectations, they know what they need to do to be successful, and the same with our ninth graders. So I think it was a great first start, it's our first year. So I think there's always notes and ways to get better. But just a huge thank you to Danny Adams and Jordan Rubbles, our teachers leading the web crew at the middle school, and uh Chris Sineseros and um Emily Bucy at the high school. I mean, they put in a lot of staff hours this summer to make sure that they were there to support our students because they believe in the work. They've been doing all kinds of training, it was new, they had web training through link training that cut into a lot of their summer break. But they signed up because they believed that our students need to feel like they have a place to belong and they're welcome. And I think making this priority, I think today was, we'll talk about it in superintendent update, but this has probably been my, one of my best starts to the school year I've ever.
Well, thank you, that's inspiring to hear. Uh summer institute recap, Mr. Keating.
So first I want you to know that uh this summer institute was probably the best attended summer institute I can remember. There was probably only six total days meant, when I say days, I mean staff members that missed days, six days overall uh of staff, so that's, most of the staff that they missed, they just missed one day. There were two folks that had to miss a couple of days, one was for jury duty, and one was because of giving a newborn baby at home. My honor. So it was very, very well attended. We had three days of really high engagement from staff. I was really pleased with how staff engaged themselves. Each day had a uh kind of a uh theme. And you know what, Chris is really challenged staff with this, to endeavor to get better for our students. So this summer institute was all about helping teach, give teachers the tools they need to get better for our students. And we've really made a shift from, if you think about it, we've made a shift from what students do to what students learn. And that's really where the focus is, it's on the learning, not necessarily what you do uh in class. So it's a focus from like seat time to learning specific standard. So um the first day was all about tools. So as you know, um we adopted a lot of instructional materials last year. A lot of those, uh we did math, ELA. Um so there were three sessions, there were five sessions on the first day, three of them focused on those vendors coming in and showing those teachers that were gonna be using those instructional materials, how to maneuver their way around the online version. Um we had a badge book session at the elementary school where the kindergarten teachers spent time with the uh first, second, and third grade teams who are gonna start with the badge books this year. Uh just showing them how they've integrated badge books into their classrooms. And then we had a final uh, final session was called passion projects. Tasha led that, she did a fantastic job leading, can you just give us just what does passion?
Well, really, passion project light, because this was kind of the first formal introduction for staff, but it's really tapping into students' interests and having them develop a project based on their interests um to kind of share with the world. And so it helps them identify critical sources. Teachers are kind of the coaches to help them research their project and then determine a way to present that. And so just very heavily student-centered. And so we ended up taking what teachers already have and thinking about what are those pieces that really speak to student interest and autonomy? And building out lists of things they're already doing in their classes that kind of hit some of those passion project principles.
Connecting the standards. So all of them had standards, specific outcomes, it could be from various disciplines, from ELA to science to math, all combined in one project. And we ended up with twenty-three different projects, from nature photography to uh cultural exploration, performing arts, uh living the constitution, uh just a number of different passion projects. The outcome for day one was for all staff members to have taken their instructional materials, whatever it is that's new to them, and to build the first two weeks um of lessons, so they're prepared with two weeks of lessons. Day two was about AI, we brought ESD in, and they really described the benefits of AI. Took some of the scare out of it for educators who, you know, they're pretty scared about how it's gonna be used. And there's a lot of unanswered questions, but really focused on how it can be useful for teachers. And then um they, really, the main focus was on using AI to build I don't wanna say interventions, but accommodations and differentiation for all students, so that we can meet the needs of all students. So they took the two-week plan that they put together day one, they used AI day two um to build accommodations and differentiation into those plans. And then day three, we really focused on our learning management systems. Think about the badge book system, uh it's kind of a learning management system in itself, but we use what's called ESGI to do documenting, make sure that we show student proficiency, just like we use Empower for the upper grades. So uh the Empower session was built around uh putting together playlists, activities all together on that two-week plan. So they were taking the two-week plan um and then using AI to build those accommodations and then they're putting them into their management system, so that they're ready for the first two weeks. Badge book, taking those lessons that they had planned, uh and the use of the badge book system, putting it uh ESGI, how can be useful. Very, 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 very good summary, very well. Any questions?
The big goal this year was is we felt like we were making a shift, right, because our grading is going from, and we've talked about this for the last three years, that you could be taking a test, it's a hundred-question test, and your grade is like based off of a hundred questions. But what learning are we looking for? Could have about a hundred questions, seventy questions are assessing the same skill set that you're trying to assess. Twenty questions could be assessing a different skill set. Only maybe five questions under one skill set, and five we don't know where they are. So the idea is that instead of just taking a hundred-question test and saying, that's your grade, you got a ninety-eight on the test, breaking the grading down to, these are the specific skills you need to learn at this grade level, and then transitioning that grading system. So we knew our teachers, it's a big shift, because now we're looking at what do the students need to know? And how am I assessing what the students need to know? And it's a big shift for public education, it's not a big shift for the rest of the world. That's how the rest of the world trains and educates the bulk of most professions. Right, and you're in police academy, probably exactly how you did it. Other than military, exactly how they do it. Um so we're adopting kind of the way the rest of the world does this work. But we knew that since it's so radical, instead of asking our teachers to build out a year, we said, let's just build out the next few weeks, and then when we hit our next lay start, we can support you in continuance.
Oh, that was my question, like how, how does that support look? And it just keep like baby steps, building it out until they get comfortable? Yeah.
And we actually with the instructional materials, the, we had already had professional development, a first round of it back in June before summer started. I set that up so that they have summer to become perusing. Um but this was kind of a recap and looking at and helping scaffold.
It's been about three years building. The summer institute was, okay, we've been building, we defining, for three years of getting our teachers to be highly attentive, and this is what I want our students to know. So our summer institute was, okay, we've done all this work, it's time to put it in action. And I think I'd agree with Mark, it's one of the best summer institutes we've had because it's so tangible on where it needs to go now.
Tangible and clear. I like it. That's so good. Well, ready? Anybody else have anything for Mark before we move on? Thank you. Uh, public comment? Nothing? A finished business, we have approval of policy forty-two sixty, use facility second and final reading. There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of policy fifty-four oh six, leave sharing second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy fifty-four oh six, leave sharing second and final reading.
I'll second.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to adopt policy sixty-five thirty, insurance, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval to adopt policy sixty-five thirty, insurance, second and final reading.
Second.
And a motion Megan seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of policy sixty-seven hundred, nutrition, second and final reading.
I'll move to approval of C sixty-seven, nutrition, uh second, final reading.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval to adopt policy sixty-seven oh one, recess and physical activity, second and final reading.
I'll move, approval to adopt policy sixty-seven oh one, recess and physical activity, second and final reading.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh approval to adopt policy sixty-seven oh two, wellness, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval to adopt policy sixty-seven oh two, wellness, second and final reading.
I'll second.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business, approval of egg booster fundraisers, fundraiser.
Basically, Tonya, you're just here to
Answer any question?
Answer any questions we have for football concessions.
It's like everything's been verified.
Uh county permit.
It's in the works, they asked the questions about the water, when I put Renzi now, so I emailed back to Renz for clarification.
If you need any help with that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll move for the approval of the egg booster fundraiser.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Think it's also worth noting, we do want to thank the egg boosters for being so flexible. I know that's what we're working on our permitting and the county permitting process and what documentation. It's kind of made it very fluid on whether we have a name or not. So I think just our appreciation on having done lots of these instruction projects and have this harder predict, so we're just thankful.
Okay, approval of class of twenty twenty-five booster fundraiser.
I just have a silly, well, I found a silly question, but I have a question. I don't see the comedy show.
Sure don't. Darn it, really?
Does anybody do it?
I think it's up for grabs, isn't it?
Somebody picked it up.
Did they? Who do you think picked it up?
My sister, so like.
Oh, okay.
Good to know.
Yeah.
I'll move for the approval of class of twenty twenty-five booster fundraiser.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? That's for the hotel. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, please, that fundraiser was a fun one.
It's a lot.
Yeah, I know, been there, a couple times.
Okay, approval of class of twenty thirty booster fundraiser.
That's me. So anyways, our hope is to do two dances this year, one right off the back, a back to school, school spirit, blue and white. Um hopefully on the thirteenth, it's clear on the calendar, it's, the, the football game is way in Stevenson, so we figured most wouldn't be going to that game anyways, because of course we don't want to take away anything from that. Uh so that's what we're hoping for, for our first dance. And then the second one being around Valentine's Day, hopefully on Valentine's Day, but because we don't know the sports schedule yet, we just put it as a February dance. And then our last um fundraiser idea is, I put down a bowl-a-thon, but we'd have a fun name like, you know, strike up a good time. Uh and basically, well, that would be, would be some sort of family fun day, where we've already talked with Henry at the bowling alley. And we wanted to come up with something that's something fun to do in our community that we forget to utilize. I love to bowl, but I never think about it. Uh so we thought we could make that a fundraiser where, you know, people could pay for a two-hour block of time to come and bowl, and then maybe add a raffle, you know, for those that don't, don't want to come to, to be able to raise a little bit extra money that way. So and we hope to do that um either October twenty-seventh or early into November.
I'll move for the approval of class of twenty thirty booster fundraiser.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Megan, I think the bowling is a great idea. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Approval of fuel bid for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. It's a Bogart, but same here. We're just gonna read.
I'm here to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Where were you the other day, I have a question.
Fuel bill back down like a dollar a gallon?
No, what the heck?
We did get a new van to say.
I'll move for the approval of the fuel bid for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of bread bid. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, I don't know why I laughed. Hope it rises.
For the approval.
Here all night, won't be all night.
For twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the dairy bid for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll move for the approval of dairy bid for twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'll second. It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just keep it cool.
All right. That are really ridiculous.
Okay. You gotta have some fun up here.
There are any, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What a motion carries. Approval of twenty-four, twenty-five minimum basic ed requirements.
Um so we have about a hundred and seven questions from the state board of ed of things that we verify we're doing for all of our students through the school year that the state requires. So this is just the verification of those. I wouldn't be a hundred and seven things, I think questions one hundred and three to one hundred and seven is my name and contact information. But uh just in general, like have we met minimum instructional minutes, lots of paper, no, school's a hundred and eighty days, but we also have a minimum number of hours students must attend school, so we have a hundred and eighty days of school, not enough hours. Uh we would still have to make up the hour time. And do, are we delivering the appropriate instruction, the different coursework, the materials? So uh this, we're just seeking approval on the minimum basic ed requirements that goes to the state board of education to verify that we're meeting all our state requirements.
I'll move for the approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five minimum basic ed requirements.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five board goals.
From our attached in your board package, you have a copy of the four goals from the board retreat and the work that we'd like to have accomplished this year. Um that includes uh every year, none of board policy review. So this year we'd move into the four thousand series of the board policy reviews, um which is our uh, which includes uh community. So use of our fields, that'll be a lot, it's a big board policy, big stack of board policies.
That's good.
Uh next one is focusing on inclusion, that we have every student engaged. Um and that would be inclusive of that uh Lincoln web group presentation you had heard tonight. Focus on the implementation of new instructional materials. We have new updated, I think, Mark was the last material, district-wide materials adoption completed. So um so we eight years ago, so we have all new instructional materials, up-to-date, best ELA, best math materials, some more what Mark is gonna be. They give a focus on how that implementation comes into place. Um one of our expectations with our staff is, is that we actually want our staff to be better than the materials. So they have materials, we know they're vetted, we know they're aligned to the standards, but our staff has been challenged that if they can connect it to the learning outcomes, to find ways to improve student learning outcomes, we want them to find ways to outperform. But that does require standardized alignment and assessment and data. Next, we have a focus on high-quality instructions in classrooms. Our administrative retreat was focused on teaching. We actually had all of our administrators teach uh during our admin retreat, um get back, you know, go back to their own instructional practices and then look for ways that we want to ensure bell-to-bell instruction. So that means the moment students walk into a classroom, the moment that second bell happens, we know the student learning is happening from the very beginning, all the way to the very end. And really working through and defining what that bell-to-bell instruction should look like, what are the best ways to keep students engaged? And how can our administrators be in a position to help coach our teachers? We began, we ended the year last year with our administrators being retrained on the entire teacher evaluation system in June. We'll have two new training dates, one in October, one in March, which will be right when those various elements of the teacher evaluations are due. So then that way, our administrators having a chance to work with state-based trainers, help bring up that instruction and make sure that we have, we're approaching it on how can our administrators be coaches in the classroom and help teachers with instructional practices. Then we are looking at a shift into an executive functioning skills, um have a priority of us, are we, from our uh, our board reading and our admin reading this summer on, are we working with students on how to set goals? Right, a lot of education is just show up and do, but are we giving our students life skills on how to set a goal, how to map out, how to achieve a goal, how to see it through, how to have a priority? And really looking at those executive functioning skills and how they connect into like a social emotional learning environment. Because most students, they, all students shows, research shows, somebody who knows how setable and achievable actually finds more value in what they're doing. And then does our educational environment look like what we're trying to do? And the last one is, is moving forward with a student handbook. Last year we completed the book, the five thousand board policy review, which is all personnel and HR. Um so now moving forward with the employee standard operating procedures handbook on what the expectations are, what the in-classroom learning is, but then also what are those HR policies and procedures? Haven't had a standard operating procedure SOP in a while. Um so the, but we couldn't really move to updating that handbook until we had that board policy adoption done last year. So we feel that with the five thousands being completed, we're in a position to move forward with that. And then so the idea is, this is as you would like it, as we understood from the board retreat, this would move into our, my evaluation and the very end, the future agenda items, where we'd be putting these down, where we'd have updates on where we are in getting this work done this year for our scope of work. Can I capture it?
Yes, you did.
I'll move for the approval of twenty-two or twenty-five board goals.
Then a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy twenty-two fifty-five, alternative learning experience courses, first readings.
It's just a recommended policy, we just needed to update the policy on where ALE experiences are becoming available for our students. Our Arizona State University partnership actually runs as an ALE program. Students through Alma High School can access the program. We also needed to update the principal. Students through Alma High School can access the program. We also need to update the principal on assignment, so it's just a housekeeping update.
I'll move for the. Approval of policy twenty two fifty five, the alternative learning experience courses first reading.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of heads up football trainer Larry Rains, Mr. Clark.
So the W I A mandates um, that we have assistance for. They actually mandate this heads up tackling system for safety of players. And that has to be taught every year to our players. Matter of fact, Chris did it for his one year. But um, the ma, they also tell you that you have four ways to do this. You can send your team to a clinician, you can send your, all your coaches to a clinician. You bring the clinician in, or you can get one of your coaches or more than one trained. And they, they bring back the system and teach it to your kids, your coaches and your kids every year. So Larry did that, so I'd like for the approval of Larry to be our heads up football trainer. Tackling trainer. It should say tackling.
And this just lets the W I A know that that's our person, man.
Yeah, let's them know that, and the thing I, we've done this for years, but what I didn't know, it needs to be more approved.
Okay.
I will move the approval of. Uh, heads up football trainer for Larry Rains. It's been a motion made and. Double A seconded, you can pick whoever you can choose.
Take your pick.
Is there any discussion or further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Budget reports.
Guys, how do everybody report? We're at four twenty seven, bringing all of our, or fund balance right now. I'm, I'm working on closing books. So, um, any questions on the reports? There's a standard, not big reports.
They're a little less interesting than in previous years, cause it's July, so we don't have students, we don't have a change in student ID or account. So at this point, it's kind of just running. There's no dramatic budget changes in July or August, we're just. Cleaning out for the remainder of the year.
Projection is right around a five million dollar, any imbalance.
The way that was accomplished is, is like instructional materials, we use federal lesser dollars. As opposed to part levy, we will pay for that. So um, you know that a lot of school districts, a lot of school districts are going through financial problems. Think where we did, that's because a lot of hiring happened. We're one of the few school districts that didn't hire a lot of employees on temporary federal grant money. So that what you see is happening across the state right now, and you hear about school districts being shut down, is your federal temporary grant money went away. And then lots of employees were laid off. And then not only were those employees laid off, but when you lay them off, they also come with a lot of unemployment costs. Cause the previous employer must carry the cost and that unemployment cost. So we don't, we're not carrying any of the layup or the unemployment costs. So as a, uh, we did not supplant. What we did is we did make purchases to make sure we could shore up the general operations of the district. Now, um, teacher expenses, this where. Can come out of that, that could spend death, so it's advisable not to make like large hiring. You know, big purchases or new expenses, because that would be like taking on a lifetime expense, like a lifetime bill. Out of the money in your savings account, and no one would advise that you do that financially. So.
Any questions?
You just worth noting. We are. I think I can say this confidently, one of the best fiscal positions in a school district in the state right now. Because we did not go through and hire employees, permanent employees and temporary. So, but it did make for a good hiring, did have our choice of a lot of really incredible candidates. Which, you're okay, that makes a good segue into my turn.
Who's on in?
Um, uh, we gotta have a chance to walk through, we've been changing delivery of instruction. Um, so we actually hired new instructional coaches, so. One of the ways that we used to do intervention is, is if students were behind in an academic class, they would go and get intervention delivered. Um, through a classified employee, but that employee can't write the instruction, they can't write curriculum, you have to be a certified teacher. So we actually did a staffing restructure now where we have certified, you're delivering that instruction, which makes the most amount of sense. You have your most in need learners, students struggling in math, getting instruction by someone certified in math. And to become a certified teacher, you have to pass what's called the praxis exam, which means if you're teaching math, you have to show you have the math skill. So that means only somebody who can show they've passed the math and have the math skill can be a certified teacher. So now we're the most in need learners are getting that support from somebody with training, with certification, with background in providing that. So as a district, we're really proud when we really stand by that point. That we want our students that are most in need getting instruction from the people credentialed and certified in delivering that support. And that's what's best for our kids. So we're really proud of how we restructured to have these coaches delivering our intervention for our kids. Uh, the next point that I really would like to point out, we walked through today, first time in the start of the school year. That I've seen every teacher across the board going through our expectations, walking our students down the hall. This is how we get lunch, this is how we go through the halls, this is how we check out, if your parents are gonna come get you, this is where you do it. And we think that's a really important step, because one of the things that we wanted to curb is, we know we have a lot of student, um, negative student to student interactions. And we want to curb those student interactions, we want to have students to have more, you know, positive interaction, seeing each other as um. Peers. Um, we get a lot of bullying and harassment complaints. Um, I wouldn't go so far to say that we have a bullying problem larger than anybody else, because bullying is defined by this student. Is intentionally going out of their way to make that student's life difficult. And what you're finding is, I'll just say it really bluntly. Thirteen, fourteen year olds are too selfish to care that much about another person to make their life difficult, mainly what you have is this person. They don't like each other, so they're not nice to each other, so we don't actually meet the legal definition of bullying. Um, very rarely do, does student to student interaction meet the legal threshold of bullying. What we do have is students not seeing each other as people. And not treating each other kindly as people, because of that kind of egocentrism. So this uh, link group and web crew is really working on how students see each other as people. And having our teachers define and walk our students through those expectations to see each other as people and peers. And I think today was just one of the best starts of the school year, because it was just across the board, every building, students walking around, how we have lunch, how we engage with each other. And I think it just really set the tone for just a great year. Michael, I mean, you walked around with me, what is your uh?
It was a, it was a good day, it was a lot of smiles, everybody's really happy, obviously it's the first day. It was good to be in the building and welcome people back and get to talk to some kids. Um, it seemed like everybody was doing really well in transition, I was, like I said, I was really impressed with the sixth, the ninth uh, transition, that was pretty impressive to see. So.
So I think I really would like to, I mean, between our administrators, really working on how can we focus on making sure we have a great learning environment in every single one of our classrooms. I mean, one of the biggest reasons why students struggle, you know, and behaviorally, is you have too much downtime in a classroom. So if we can focus on that bell to bell instruction, we think we can really curb a large portion of student behaviors. We can really focus on how students are interacting with each other. We do think that we have goals, we're going into school year with priority and a vision. And we feel that we uh, focused our scope of work on that priority and vision, so just a great, I mean, it was a great day, this is a great summer, seeing that focus. And a great day, seeing everybody really uh, tuned into that focus.
It's a good start, a lot of hard work, so I appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move into our executive session, uh, we will be in there for twenty minutes, no actual be taken. Thank you, everyone. Have a great short week.
Yeah, thanks everybody for going in first day and have a great year.
Thank you.
We're gonna go into six forty, we'll come out at seven and ten.
Welcome back.
Make a motion during the meeting.
Seconded.
And a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting ended.